Charles, just if I may ask, Eric is not here tonight, right?
Eric's not here tonight. I am recording this meeting. Is there anybody else present who is doing the same? And if so, please let me know. Okay, hearing no one, I'll just do a quick roll call. Charles Roberts, I'm here. David Chichester?
Yeah.
Are you taking notes, David?
Emily's here.
Okay, Emily.
I'm the clerk.
Okay. All right, no, that's great. David did it once, so I think I conflated him with our note taker. Sorry about that.
I wouldn't want to take that away from you.
No.
Well, thanks so much for doing that, David. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Yes, you are clearly here.
Here.
George Tlemensis?
Here.
Hey, Natty Hussey's absent. And an alternate in command is not here. David, I'm gonna elevate you to a voting member if you're comfortable in that role for the evening.
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Thank you. So our first order of business is approval of minutes from the 10th, 2022, and June 2nd, 2022. So starting on the May 5th. Any comments from anybody? George?
I'll just make a motion to approve the May 10th minutes.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. So no roll call. 6222. Any comments?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
The motion is recorded, the motion to forward the proposed zoning amendment to the city council. The motion itself is there, but the words of the amendment are not there. Should it be?
Let's see. Um, it's a good question.
I think you're right. That would be my impression, Dave. You were probably right.
I also have a question for point of order.
Okay.
On the minutes forms that Eric gave me, there's not an approval of minutes for the 22nd. Is this May 22nd?
June 2nd.
June, right, so we already did that.
Right.
We did May 10th.
May? Because I, okay, so we didn't, because I don't have May 10th. The only thing I have is June 2nd on the minutes from Eric. We did do May 10th.
Yeah, that's probably just an oversight.
Okay.
It is on the agenda.
I just want to make sure I'm getting the right thing. Okay, so May 10th. Thank you. And now we're on to June 2nd.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I think we should probably ask Eric to include the wording of the initiative in the minutes.
Good catch, Dave.
Any further discussion?
Yes, in the very last item with Charles putting Dave on to the CPC, I think the word in the last sentence should be appointed, not nominated. My understanding is that there's anyone representing the board on another entity, the chair appoints that person.
Okay.
Nomination suggests there's another approval level or layer.
Well, there was another approval level from the mayor.
I don't believe so.
Well, that's after our nomination.
David?
It's my understanding that the mayor appoints me to the city council. And what I did was I sent a letter of interest to the mayor, said that I would be willing to do that. And I got a response back that said that my name will be put forward at the next council meeting in July.
Yeah, so it was a nomination, actually. George?
Yeah, just to clarify, I think, David, are you talking about for, for what? For the CPC?
Yes.
I, I don't.
I saw the letter from the mayor accepting his nomination and being appointed. Emily?
Amy's in the waiting room.
She is?
She just texted me.
She's not showing up. She should just be able to zoom right in or log right in. There is no waiting room.
So maybe she's trying to use Zoom link instead of being on WebEx?
That's probably it.
Okay. Because we don't start that till July 15th, right?
Right, and that's gonna be, I think that's gonna be a hybrid.
Okay, sorry, guys.
Right, so did you, are you in tough communication with Amy right now?
Yes.
Thank you.
What is that called? Ex parte conversation?
So let me know when I should continue.
Okay, George.
So, for example, I am the planning board's representative on the master plan implementation committee. That never went through council. It was, in fact, Roxanne, as chair of the planning board, who appointed me to be the planning board's representative on the SGIC. And I think it's equivalent, whenever someone is representing an entity on another entity, the chair appoints that person. I don't, it doesn't make sense to me that that would go through another layer of approval by the mayor and then the city council by precedent.
Well,
the council never had to weigh in, nor did the mayor, about me being the planning board's representative on the SGIC.
Yeah, as I recall, the email from the mayor, she was, maybe she was just accepting the appointment. Let me find the email. As long as we're.
While he's doing that, Dave, could I just, for point of clarification, you are not, because I wanted to conflate something else. You're not pursuing the full membership on this board, are you?
That is correct, I am not.
Okay, because what you were talking about sounded more like that than an appointment to another committee. So, thank you.
So maybe we could just like leave it at that, Eric. We could ask Eric to double check nomination versus appointed, but I mean, we're nominating, oh, here's Amy. We're nominating, and even if we accidentally said appointed, it's not like it's a sueable offense, so. It has the same end game.
It isn't urgent, but it would be good to clarify, I think.
Right, so what I mean is like we could just leave it as asking Eric to clarify and then move on to the next thing.
Sounds fine to me.
Yeah, I'm not, are you talking about this whole nomination versus appointment?
I'll put it in the notes to ask Eric to chat and to fix it.
Yeah, because I'm not finding the email.
I'm looking for it too, and I can't find it.
That's weird. Okay, so let's just.
This is riveting, though.
It is riveting.
I know, but I have like three baseball games going on outside. That is riveting, guys. I want to get to that.
Can I, I did.
All right.
Oh.
Just read what I got back from the mayor's.
Yeah. Yep.
She said, "With the mayor's permission, I will add your appointment to the July list for the city council." So now we've got a mixture of words here. "I'll add your appointment to the July list for the city council."
Yeah, I'm less concerned about the minutes since I brought this up, and more concerned about clarifying what the procedure is. If there's a need to go through the mayor and the council for someone representing this body on another body that has a planning board representative.
Let's clarify it with Eric. As, and we'll go for it. Hi, Amy. As our fifth member rounding out the official quorum, would you like to be elevated to a voting position to on these ANRs that we have coming before us? Okay, great.
Excuse me, Charles, we need to, we need to vote on the, we haven't voted on the June 2nd minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June 2nd.
I think we had a motion and a second, and we were in a discussion.
Who moved the motion, then? Sorry, I missed it.
George, I seconded.
That's why I had it there. I could have sworn that was for the May 10th, though, guys.
Same thing for both.
It was for the May 10th.
I need coffee. Thank you.
We're all friends here. Okay.
So I'm comfortable voting on it with that there will be clarification about that question.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Negatives? Okay, it's a unanimous vote. Thank you. All right. Um, let's see. Next. We have the approval not required plan endorsement for a lot off Green River Cemetery Assessor's Map Tax R42 Lot 25, submitted by the Green River Cemetery Company. I can do a screen share here. So this is, this is the lot in question. This is Wisdom Way going up to the fairgrounds, so River Street's down here. You're coming up the hill. I believe this is the driveway into, that accesses the children, where the Children's Advocacy Center is now. And there's an abutting parcel here. This is a legal building lot, and so they are creating a lot off of their property, frontage lot. And all the requirements are, I did talk to Eric about these three items, so.
Thank you. And what is the frontage requirement there, Charles?
I think, well, so that's a good question, because I don't know that number off the top of my head. It's usually 60, 60 feet.
I think it's 142 here, right?
What was that word that you asked, George? What was the?
Frontage.
Thank you. You said 140?
Well, it says on here, what is it? 142 and change is what it is. And this is being just created, Charles, as an independent lot. It's not being combined with anything.
Right.
Okay.
So let me just do something here if I can. I can't seem to, though. There it is. So this is, it's upside down, because the approval not required is south is up as opposed to north, which is unusual. But so this is, I think, where the lot's being created.
Thank you.
Sure. George?
So I'll make a motion to endorse this ANR.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that's a unanimous. George?
I will make a motion to have the chair sign on behalf of the board.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Next is approval not required plan endorsement for a lot off 59 and 61 Montague City Road Assessor's Tax Map 4, lots 4 and 6, submitted by David Zaccio. So that is a second here, folks. This lot here. So this is, this is the overall piece of property of the former Shetter School. And this is a lot that they are curving, carving out from this overall lot. If anybody noticed, I talked to Eric about this, is that the setbacks here are actually 10 feet. And these setbacks are less than 10 feet, but apparently in existing conditions where you're confined by certain pre-existing geometries, it's okay if you feel like within inches of meeting the requirements of zoning. So those setbacks aren't an issue.
And where are you talking about of the the house to the proposed?
The, yeah, that's the side yard setback right here, George.
Yeah. Charles, there's one thing on this I was confused by, or I'm confused by, and you'd have to probably enlarge that greatly. But to the left of that lot 2, or incorporating some of it, there's a faint dotted line. It said existing parcel 2. And you see how that shows arrows to the dotted line that includes part of the yard the house is on and part of the one-story school building? And I have no idea what that is. It says, "See locus notes." I didn't see the locus note.
So it's almost implying like there's an existing lot here that they're reconfiguring into this, into this configuration?
Locus note means see the curve. So I think that means see existing parcel 1, because it also says see locus note.
I don't see the locus notes here, though.
I do see something about, in the notes to the lower left, about parcel 1.
There we go. Yeah. I guess that's not clear to me.
Mm-hmm.
What that means. So is that the question? The general question is what does, what is this existing parcel 2 referencing?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, as I say, bisects the one-story school building. So it's, yeah.
Right. I think, I think what matters for us in our review is that, is that both of these lots conform to the ANR independent of whatever that piece of information is.
And your understanding is the frontage requirement there is 60 as well?
Yeah, yeah. Let me just get the dimensional table out here.
Oh, at the top right, there are locus references. Maybe that's the locus notes.
Yeah, it's 65 feet is the frontage requirement, and 8,000 square feet.
Yep, that actually is in the upper, in the locus references in the upper right. Again, my apologies, I should have left a little more time between my bike ride and it mentions the frontage and the setbacks. Yeah, it does reference existing parcels 1 and 2 there under locus references. It doesn't help my understanding.
I think, I think, I think what's happening is this existing parcel 2 is being reconfigured into this new parcel.
Okay.
Do.
It's, I don't think it's a barrier to, as you were saying, to our approving it. It's just, these are opportunities for us to learn, you know, about different aspects of these.
Well, we've never had an ANR come before us where we were reconfiguring an existing lot within a larger parcel, which is essentially what we're doing here. So this is, it's a little different. Just because I like doing this, I'll just bring this up. So this is, this is where the house is. This being, you know, parcel 2 is creating this.
Yep. No, that's very helpful, Charles, thank you. I know for myself, I do every site visit, but I don't do them for the ANRs routinely, so.
Yeah, I think that these are super, super helpful.
Yeah.
George?
Unless anyone else wants to take a turn, I'll make a motion to endorse the ANR.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. And you'll never guess, I'll make a motion.
Unanimous vote.
Oh, Emily, go ahead.
I want to make a motion, let Charles say it.
All right.
Second.
Any further discussion on this one? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the ayes have it. One final ANR.
I think by now I know how to spell unanimous.
You got that one. So this is 695 Berniston Road. Oh, I should probably just read it verbatim here. Approval not required plan endorsement for a lot at 69965 Berniston Road Assessor's Tax Map R12 Lot 67, submitted by Rodney P. Wirt. Let's see. But, oh. Share screen.
Looks like the property to the right is seating the chunk in the middle to the property on the left.
Yeah, that's right. Just giving a little background there.
Just an expanded lot.
Yeah. Yep, and then for your, for your 3D view here, or your Google Earth view, essentially this piece of property here. So this was that existing house you saw right by the road, little farmyard. This driveway here goes back and serves this road here, which is the 965 Berniston Road. And so this, this is the sort of back light area in here they're giving to these folks. And the property they're giving is, you know, it's not, in and of itself is not a lot, but they are appending it to this lot. So it's just going to become part of this single piece of property.
It's always mysterious how this came about.
Yeah.
It's any of our business, but it's interesting.
No, well, you know, they're neighbors, and they probably talk, and geez, I sure love to buy your back pasture, you know?
Yeah. Well, that's cool.
Okay. Well, why don't somebody want to make a motion? Emily? Big opportunity.
I gotta contribute here tonight somehow besides notes. I'd like to make a motion to approve it, please, as is.
George?
I'll second, it's not approved, it's endorsed. Sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstentions? Negatives? Okay, unanimous, pass.
Well, is it right?
Right.
And?
I'll nominate myself.
You mean a point?
Can I authorize?
I will authorize myself. I don't, I probably shouldn't do it. It's conflict of interest.
Amy, your turn.
Oh, I move that we ask Charles to sign on the behalf of the board.
Awesome.
Second.
All right.
Awesome.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, I'll do that. I'll go in tomorrow and sign all these papers. Good. A discussion item for this evening has to do with the skateboard park we talked about at our last meeting. George and I met Eric on site yesterday to review the conditions around trying to connect two pedestrian pathways to the skateboard park, one from School Street and one from one from Davis Street. And I'm just going to bring this image up here.
Davidson Chapman, I believe.
Oh, not School Street.
No, School is perpendicular.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right.
Oh, no, it's parallel, but different.
Davidson Chapman, yes, you, correct, you are. So a couple of things here, what they're going to do is, on the Chapman Street side of things, is what we ask, they're going to slide the bus stop or the shelter here, down here. And they're going to make the accessible curb cut right here across the street from the accessible parking. So you come from the accessible parking and then safe crossing to the skateboard park on this side. So that's all clean and simple. Where it gets tricky.
Could I, could you stay on that for a minute, please, Charles?
Sure, George.
So the curb cut into the park had been to the south of the covered area where you're circling now, right?
Right.
And did Eric agree that they would make a curb cut from the sidewalk onto that hatched area there?
I think so, yeah.
We should check on that, I think, because the idea was having pedestrian direct access so people, you know, on foot or in wheelchairs or pushing strollers wouldn't have to go through the opening where the vehicles will come through.
Right, well, actually, and I think, I think as I recall, that if you, if you, if you have this crosswalk here, you're actually mandated by ADA to create.
Right, that's right, you're right, yep.
So it's got to happen.
Yep, thanks.
This side here is a little trickier because of the way, because of the where you're coming in here in the skateboard park and the drainage flowing along this raised curb. There's no, there's no way to, without redesigning this whole sort of sloped area of the skateboard park, to actually create an accessible entry point here. So there is accessible parking and accessible ADA point here, but there really is no. but there, there really is no obvious, clear or, or, or feasible way to create an accessible, um, parking and, and, and entry and, and intake into here. So.
Because of the curbing, right?
Yeah, because of the curbing and the drainage flow and the, and the, and sort of like the, uh, the, um, the grade, the step and grade at the curb here.
If I could add, Charles, to our process, so what we had talked about with Eric was moving those two ADA spots to the, uh, there, to the north and putting them where he's circling now and then have an equivalent connection from that sidewalk to the park directly.
I see. Right, but that had its own issues relative to, you know, creating, you know, the crosswalk here, then having to make this sidewalk ADA compliant. And there, I guess there's, there's no real feasible way to make this point here ADA compliant into the park. So, so it makes more sense just to leave, leave the ADA parking here, not try and create a pedestrian, a dedicated pedestrian access at this point, but, but we are getting a, a, a pretty nice accommodation here. Convenient to entry, um, obvious connection from the sidewalk to the, to the, to like the, the, the waiting area. So that was, that was, so the thought was, you know, we running, the ideas to run this by, you know, the board and, and collect your thoughts and see what you think. I mean, generally it's an, it's, I think what, what we would call this is an, we, we had an administrative review and, uh, we would, we would be, um, sort of approving this, um, outside of a, of a, of a, of a public meeting because it's such a simple de minimis change, but, but wanted to just sort of run this by you and let you know what was going on. George?
Yeah, I, I, um, we had, uh, as we left yesterday morning from this, we thought we had resolved that, uh, that, uh, adjustment would happen with those spaces, uh, being moved to the, um, east side from the north side and having an equivalent, um, connection between the sidewalk with curb cuts to the park. And that had been what we as a board had voted on as a condition to have pedestrian access from each side. So I can't say I'm comfortable, uh, particularly with this. Um, like I say, this was, this, um, the writing on this about, and the information about the curbing and the drainage complication was something that came to Charles and myself later yesterday, uh, via email. Because what I'm envisioning is, um, you know, it, it's, it's helpful for all pedestrians. I'm particularly, you know, thinking of people with disabilities and who might be using a chair. I mean, there's, and you know, it's not, uh, as we talked about with the cyclists, it's not necessarily people coming there to participate, though some people with disabilities indeed could, uh, participate and have the ability and equipment to do that, but, um, it's more about this being a community space. And if anyone wants to come there, they should be able to get there safely, just like, you know, having a place where people lock up their bikes. So what I'm envisioning is you have, there's a lot of people who use wheelchairs downtown. I'm envisioning them coming down Davis Street and they would come into, the only way into the area would be through the automobile curb cut. And then how would they get into the park? And how would they know? How would they know?
It's a sidewalk here, George. It, it, it comes from along Davis Street and along this side and down Chapman and in that way.
No, I guess, I guess what I'm, yeah, I mean, people could go around, that is true. Yep, to get to that. That is true. There is a, there is a connection without having to go around the block or something like that. Yeah. But that was my concern. It would be ideal, I think, if you had from each side. So I'll, I'll stop talking because I, I'm interested in hearing from other folks who weren't part of the discussion, uh, Charles and I had yesterday.
David?
Uh, help me be clear on this. So the curb cut would come, uh, between the handicap spaces?
Right here, yep.
So if, so a wheelchair, uh, or skaters on their boards skating down the sidewalk and into the park, uh, would, uh, would come in there. Uh, so they'd have to be careful about handicap people opening their doors.
Well, scapers will come in anywhere.
Yeah, okay.
Chances are they're not gonna, well, I, 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 I shouldn't say, but I think that, you know, as, as, so as I understand it from, from our, our conversation with Eric, is if you create this crosswalk here, you know, you've got to create this, this curb cut here. The, 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 I guess the, the alternate would be to, you know, slide these spaces down, have the crosswalk here and, and then you, then you've got to get out of your car and move over here and come into the crosswalk. This seems like the, this the safest place to put it. To me, it's direct and convenient.
And it's making double use of the spaces required between the handicap parking spots.
Right.
It's both a unloading area and a crosswalk, so.
Right.
Well, it seems to make a lot more sense than not doing that or having it, uh, like they had originally suggested.
Yeah, and, um, does anybody have those, I can't seem to find them, those, those three D images of the park? So we could look at this thing in three dimensionals, what's going on here? Because I think that might sort of help describe the problem.
Well, the other problem is the, the way that it's sloped down, the, the side on Chapman Street is, is higher and it kind of slips down towards Davis Street. So I think that's why there's the drainage issue and that's why, in my brain at least, I could be completely wrong. But it's not, I mean, it makes sense to me why we can't have it from, from the park to Davis and, and, but we can from the park to Chapman. Because it like really slopes down there going to Davis in the corner.
Right. So what's happening is that, is that, well, a stormwater is gonna come. Well, I don't know, there must be, we have, we have to look at the, 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 uh, the drawings to understand how, 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 where, where catch basins are, how water's being directed. Must be water being directed underneath this park somehow, or that it's all surface draining and these curbs are set up at an elevation to sort of direct all the water down and around over into here. But water's gonna flow this way and around and down here, I'm guessing. Yeah, I can't seem to find those, those three D, three D sketches that we had. Oh, here they are.
There you go.
So this is the edge we're talking about. Right here.
Yeah, yep.
There must be step, are there stairs there or something?
That's what it looks like to me. On the other, on the other illustration.
Yeah, here they are. So there's stairs here. So without, without building a ramp and, you know, you, you need like twenty feet of ramp probably.
Yeah, and then skaters would try to use it too.
Yeah, so, so there's, so because of the way the grading works out, there's, there's really no way to create an accessible portal here. I mean, you know, if, if, if they had come to us early on with a conceptual design, you know, we, we might have been able to work something out, but when it gets to this point, there's no feasible way to rework, rework the design. George?
Yeah, and I, I appreciate your point, Charles, that if someone on Davis Street in a chair didn't want to come through the car parking area and, you know, get to one of the two curb cuts into the park, they could, it's not that onerous to go, there is a continuous sidewalk, as you were saying, that goes around there. So I, I appreciate you pointing that out. I hadn't really, so someone could, you know, get around to that if they were.
Right. So this isn't anything we're necessarily voting on. It's an administrative approval. Unless they were liking some incredibly strong objections, at which point I would request that we put this on the agenda for, to re-review, but, that's what's going on. Any further comments about this for now? Okay, thank you.
I was gonna say, I, I hear George's like concern that it's not what we really asked for, but given the grading, I think it's a good compromise.
Yeah, they're making some nice accommodations here. It's gonna be good.
And, and I think it speaks to the benefit of this whole site review process that, uh, that would not have happened otherwise, nor would the, be a bike rack. And I understand people have different ways of viewing these things, but you know, through, through having this process and, you know, additional eyes and the collective wisdom, it, uh, uh, it's nice to, to refine and make some improvements, so.
Yep. And I will, uh, I'll have Eric, um, make sure that we get, we get to look at the final, the final site plan.
Thank you.
When it, when it's developed. Okay. Let's see. I guess that's it. So we have a, we have a, a, a public hearing next Thursday, joint hearing with EDC, to talk about the, for, for the, for the moratorium, the cannabis moratorium and for the signage. It's probably a good idea to, to review the signage, although, because what I would like to do is, if it's, if it's possible, is, is, um, deliberate and vote on the signage initiative next week as well. I think we've been over it enough and we understand the issues that, to the point where after hearing whatever public input there is, we'll be able to, to deliberate and vote on that one. If people are comfortable with that. Were you gonna say something, David?
I wanted to change the subject when you're ready.
Change your way.
A couple of meetings ago, uh, you had indicated that you wanted the subject of the moratorium and the ordinance rewrite, uh, on the agenda for each of our meetings on a rolling basis. Uh, that seems to have disappeared from tonight's agenda.
It's, it's not on here, um. So, was it, was it, was it, was it the city council last night? Or that, that, that put forward the initiative to kind of limit the tier size to tier one? Does anybody, was anybody? So, so that is now an initiated zone, zone change. So there's gonna be a public hearing on limiting the tier size and, and, and the more, and, and we also have this moratorium. And there's, there's some, there are some, some conversations going on about the logistics of, 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 of which comes first, the moratorium or the tier size. And I think what we might be doing is, is, is opening the public hearing for the moratorium and then continue, continuing it and closing, continuing it until we can, we can, we can talk about the, uh, the, um, tier size initiative. And George, you were, you were in that email loop, right?
I'll defer to Dave. He had brought this up.
Okay, David?
Well, I just, uh, for one, wa- wanted to make sure that we do what we said we wanted to do, and that is to have this on the agenda uh, for each and every meeting going forward. Uh, if anyone who, uh, witnessed the two and a, almost two and a half hours of public comment last night at the city council, uh, there was a fair amount of interest in the, the Grove situation. Uh, and I think, uh, just as, for our own purposes, we should have that subject matter before us. And to be clear on what our message is to the community about what our job is with this. Uh, because there's a lot of misunderstanding about what we, the planning board can do or not do. And I've been trying to, to clarify that, and it sounds as though we, the planning board, can't do much of anything about the three, uh, the, the three projects that are going on now, and that our main role is in developing the zoning changes, uh, and clarifications. So I, I, I would like it for anyone who's, who tunes into this program uh, and watches us to know that we are doing our job, uh, and there are many things that we cannot do. Uh, and we don't want to mislead or bleed people on to think that, oh yeah, we, we can change a few more things. Uh, and then lastly, my question is, um, what is the process, since I'm a newbie here? What is the process for the country club project to come before the planning board at this point? And is there anything that we can do to prepare for that?
Well, so it's, it's a, it's a special permit, so ZBA is a special permit granting authority for this. But it'll come to us for a recommendation first. And that won't be a public hearing. That'll just be a, a ZBA recommendation.
And is there anything that we can do to prepare, to do some homework about that? I mean, I, I have no idea when it's just gonna happen, but, uh, I myself would like to be prepared for this and not all of a sudden find it on the agenda, uh, coming before us without giving more thought. This is a pretty serious subject.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it will come, you know, it, when, when, when it does, when, when and if an applicant submits, uh, uh, an application, I mean, applicant, when, when somebody submits an application for this project, you know, we'll get it. And then we'll have the opportunity, once we have something in front of us to respond to, to be thinking about the sorts of things that we would want to, we would want to address in, in our, in our recommendation to the ZBA. So it won't, George?
Oh, no, no, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I thought you were done.
That's okay.
So, um, it hasn't been submitted yet or, right? So, uh, one thing I would suggest, um, Dave, that we can do is just to, uh, it's the current, uh, zoning ordinance that would apply to review that section of the zoning ordinance and the special permit section of the zoning ordinance. So just to hone our familiarity with that or refresh it. And so we're remembering all the criteria that are to be considered when we review it to make a recommendation to the ZBA.
Right.
Charles, I could also, um, as far as the, um, email thread today, that was about the, um, uh, this initiative. I mean, we made the initiative for the moratorium, which is scheduled for the joint public hearing next week. So now there's a tier one, uh, limitation, uh, proposal that's been initiated. Now, in the thread between you and me and Eric today, and I'll just point out that you and me conversing is not a open meeting of violation, because we're not a quorum. So we're very intentional about that, but, um, uh, when I asked who initiated that, was that part of the, uh, citizen's petition or what initiated that? And I heard the EDC. Now, my understanding is, I just want to clarify, a council committee, I didn't think could initiate, the council can. But I think the committee could. So I, I'm guessing the committee, uh, recommended that and the council last night endorsed that? Is that accurate?
I think, I, I, I don't know, George. Um, could be, um, were you at, were David, were, were you, were you, you were at the meeting, right, David?
I was, and I saw that the full citizen, um, commentary, uh, they, on the, the town television station, what is it? um television station, whether it's T, TV, whatever that, the, the town that broadcasts that, they never came back on after the public commentary. At least I wasn't able to get it. Uh, so it said, we'll be back in a minute and that sign was up there for well over two hours.
Okay.
Oops.
Can you name, were you, were you or Emily there?
I, I guess I could have gone to the, to the WebEx, but I was in bed at the time. Uh, uh, it was easier to, to watch it on television, but it never came back. So I don't know the answer.
Emily, were you or Amy there? Or Amy, you were Emily?
I was not. When I was nodding earlier, it was because I was remembering what we had said and like as I type, I tend to nod, so sorry.
Okay, all right. Well, I think that um, like I, I, I'm on, you know, I have, I, I, I don't think the communication is clear on, on who, who initiated it, whether it was the EDC or the city council at the CDC's behest or, 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 but my understanding is that at the city council last night, it was initiated.
Thanks, because I believe there are five ways, right? It can be the planning board, the city council, citizens petition. Not sure what the other two are. Is it mayor?
Mayor.
I'm not sure. I thought there were five, but.
There's the mayor, maybe the ZBA?
Uh, might be, yeah. Okay, thanks. If I could also, I appreciated uh Dave you pointing out about, we had said we wanted to have this on the agenda every time, and I think that would be important, Charles. I was kind of thinking, well, it didn't make that much difference about it not being on the agenda tonight because we're having an extra meeting uh next week, the joint public hearing that is focused on, to some extent, on this issue. But your point is well taken, that I think we should have it there every meeting. Just make sure Eric has it, Charles, to, it's every meeting as a placeholder. We might decide we don't have time in a particular meeting, but should always be there to help us stay focused and.
I think, I think the reason why it came off the agenda is because, is because we put forward the moratorium and, and there was nothing more to talk about at the, in the, in the immediate term.
But there is. I mean, we could have a discussion about tier size, because we could have a discussion about setbacks. We could have a discussion about water usage. So, yeah, so we, there's all that, that list that uh, uh, David uh put together that uh, we, we could, you know, each meeting, we could touch on one or others, or we could say, okay, for next meeting, we're gonna focus on this issue. Let's all do a bit of research or that kind of thing.
Okay.
So just keeping it in, you know, near the front of our minds, because um, assuming the moratorium is approved, we want to use that time, time well, so.
Okay, well, uh.
Thanks.
Sure. So yeah, let the, uh, let the meeting minutes reflect it. Uh, we'll ask Eric to keep. Keep a, keep, keep this as a rolling item on the agenda.
You want it in bold, every.
Because there are a lot of issues to talk about. If we have the freedom to just be able to bring things up as we, as they, as they, as they surface in our thought process, then that's great. David?
I think we can do a better job by spreading it out over the moratorium rather than thinking that that's just gonna give us a break uh so that we get, we, we can look at, at the moratorium uh and, and all of the elements there and take our time. And, and it would be a good idea perhaps to have an action plan or a structure, as we were starting to, to mention here, uh, that says, let's have a plan for attacking this, for approaching it, uh, and, and deal with it in, in a formal, organized way.
Okay. Will do. I guess that's a good approach. So that's board and staff reports. Anything else for board and staff?
I don't know about you guys, but I was just brought some fresh watermelon, so.
Please. You know, I can't say as, as I have fresh watermelon right now. All right, well, I.
Probably won't happen at the John Zahn Center, will it?
Oh, so yeah, the, um, so our.
Oh, that's a good question, yeah.
So the next, so when we go to hybrid meetings, we have to have a minimum quorum of three in person live at all of our meetings. So even though, even though I think it's convenient to do, to do things virtually, I think we're gonna have to have, we're gonna have to be uh just sort of thoughtful about communicating with each, with each other about who can and who can't necessarily make a meeting in person. So we make sure we always have three people there. George?
So um, you haven't heard anything else about uh any extension by the governor beyond July 15th, I assume?
No, I haven't.
Okay. And I just want again, I, I think I had sent to everybody that the details about open meeting law, um, uh, about remote participation. And it is, say again?
Sorry, sorry, I just started talking to myself, but then I was not muted. Sorry, George.
No, no, did I send that to everybody? Did I?
We talked about it extensively last meeting.
Right, I.
No, got it sent. I don't remember.
I subsequently sent out, I thought to the whole board, a uh one pager summary I had done for the SGIC because I researched it a bit, talked with Kathy Scott.
Yeah.
And, and it, it's important to realize, it's real specific. Uh, there are five, again, five uh, uh rationale someone can have for missing a meeting. And it's personal illness, personal disability, uh, military service, geographic distance.
Geographic.
And one other. And that has to be documented in the um minutes and stuff. So it's, 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 it's pretty formalized. Not just, oh, we gotta have three in person and other people can, you know, it's, it's uh, the assumption is everybody will be there in person. And we'll try to be there in person.
As clerk, I will have that stuff down. I'll have it memorized, George. I will give everyone on the ball, okay?
Very impressive.
Only problem is with in person, I don't have snacks delivered.
I know, that's what David was saying, so. I don't think it's against Robert's rules.
It's against my rules.
It's like, you gotta have enough for everybody.
Right, um. So we have one more WebEx allowed meeting, right? July, July 2nd? Is that what it is?
Of our regular meetings, yeah.
Yeah.
But we can't forget, we have to adjourn by 7:30 because we have townwide fireworks at eight, guys.
Okay, I don't know what's on the agenda, but uh, fireworks or it's, so, yeah, but just they don't, they don't, they never go off until nine.
Right.
I have to get a good spot.
Right.
Sounds like a conflict of interest to me, so um.
I'm glad they moved all the food trucks away from the foot of the mountains. I, there's all that light pollution. It's a really, it's a really.
That was nice last year, yeah.
But now the food trucks are along whatever that street is. It's great.
So Charles, if I could, one last scheduling thing. So next week on Thursday, we have the joint public hearing.
Correct.
You're saying there's gonna be another joint public hearing related to the tier size.
Right.
And that the moratorium might be bumped to be combined with that. So it'd be a joint, joint uh hearing. And was there a date discussed for that? And would that be on the EDC's date since?
Yeah, it'll be on, it'll be on the EDC's date. I mean, if we're doing this thing, if we're doing this thing on a sort of like a shared basis. And I don't think that date's been determined yet.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. Thank you.
Yep. Anything else from folks? Should be adjourned?
If someone makes a motion, we can, yeah. I think that's good.
Oh, all right.
Thanks, David.
I hate to say.
Take the initiative.
Right.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.